Hey guys, Happy Friday. So I'm just on here to give you guys a quick word. This won't be long at all, just bear with me. I have my laptop, my Bible, my notes of course. But what God is basically saying in this word is, let me say the exact wording. "Help others get the job done by judging righteously." Help others get the job done by judging righteously. And I'm looking at my paper because I had to write down what I heard the Lord tell me the morning that I woke up from this dream, okay? And he said, "Help others get the job done by judging righteously." And by judging righteously, he means be in alignment with his divine law and what's accurate in God's eyes, not what you feel is accurate in your own eyes. And this can go back to a lot of people not understanding why God will have you stand for certain people, whether it's friends, people in your family, why he connects you to certain people. And I get this a lot in my comments on a lot of my videos. Why would God have you stand for a husband who was a narcissist? Or who was this or who was that? The same reason Jesus died on the cross for your little sin and self and my little sin and self, okay? No sin is greater than the other. The only difference is different sins come with different consequences. But God does not look at you and another person who's sinning and say that your sin is less than their sin. No, again, sins come with different consequences. But the same reason why Jesus got nailed to a cross and crucified for you and me and our sins is the same reason why he has people stand for other people and stand in that gap. So that's definitely something that needs to be addressed because I don't know why most people feel like God is only gonna have you stand in the gap for someone that's already well on their way, that's already connected to him, that's already walking into their purpose. That makes no sense. He'll leave the 99 to look for the one, okay? And your prodigal husband, your prodigal sister, your prodigal brother, your prodigal mom, your prodigal dad, they may be that one, okay? That he's leaving the 99 to look for, okay? And he has people stand in the gap for these people, okay? So again, before I get into the dream, I heard the Lord say, after I woke up from this dream, "Help others get the job done by judging righteously." And again, guys, by judging righteously, he means make sure that the judgment that you're passing is in alignment with how God would want you to judge the situation. I don't know why my words just came out like that. You judge righteously by making sure that the judgment you're passing on others is in alignment with God's will and his way, okay? By making sure that it's in alignment with God's divine law for that person's life and for your reason for being in their life. And it's judging accurately, not just judging by what you feel is right. There's ways that seem right to men that lead to death, okay? So one thing I told you guys before is that God told me to teach women how to do it accurately, not just the right way, but the accurate way as in his way. Because when it's accurate and it's God's way, there is no other way around, okay? Anything that's done right can be done so many different ways. And we talked about this. If God tells you to write two plus two equals four on a paper and you write one plus one plus one plus one equals four, yeah, the outcome is correct, but that was not the right way. That wasn't the accurate way that God wanted you to do it. The answer was right, but the way was wrong, okay? And I hope you guys are catching me on that. God is saying, "Do it the accurate way, his way, not just what may seem right to you or other people," okay? And I think a lot can go, um, we could even take this back to Ananias having to lay hands on Saul before he became Paul. And you guys remember that the Lord blinded Saul, okay? He was up there killing Christians. The Lord had knocked him down off of his little high horse on his road to Damascus, blinded him. And in order for him to get his vision back, God sent Ananias to lay hands on Saul, okay? Again, he was Saul before he was Paul. At this time, he was still Saul. The Lord sends Ananias and says, "Hey, Ananias, Paul's praying. He's already seen in a vision that you were gonna come lay hands on him to heal him. Go heal him." And Ananias is like, "What, Lord? Like this man was killing Christians. You telling me to go lay hands on him?" And the Lord had to come back to Ananias and say, "That's my chosen vessel. Go anoint him, go lay hands on him and restore his sight." Now, Jesus could have easily snapped his finger, spoke a word, did whatever, and Saul would have had his vision back. It was just that simple, okay? The Lord God is the one that blinded him. So the Lord God could have very well given him his vision back. He didn't. He sent a person, his disciple. Ananias was one of his disciples, as in his followers, to go lay hands on him to restore his vision. Father God could have did it. He didn't. He sent somebody. And in this instance, he's sending you. He's sending me for who this is for, okay? He's calling his Debras to the forefront, okay? He's calling his judges, the ones that he's deemed righteous judges, to help his people, to lead his people, okay, in this hour. So a day before I had this dream, or maybe two days. No, it was like a day before I had this dream. My sister in Christ, Leslie, reached out to me early in the morning and she had just had a dream and I was in her dream. And she's like, "Hey Nina, I had this dream vision." And she's like, "I saw you as a judge in a courtroom." She said, "I was wearing a black robe like the judges wear in court." And she said she saw the word "board of trustees" in her dream or vision. It was her dream or vision. She saw the word "board of trustees." And she also said that she heard one of my YouTube videos playing in the background, right? But she couldn't remember what video it was. So throughout that day, I just sat on the word, sat with God on this word. And the next day, the Lord led me back to a word I posted about Deborah, the judge, right? And the word has a title similar to, "God is using you as the Deborah in your marriage," or something like that. And I'll link the video in the comment section. But I knew that was the video that Sister Leslie had heard playing in the background of that dream. The Lord had confirmed that to me. So I sent her the video. Now, in the vision dream, she saw with me as the judge, the word "board of trustees" that she saw. That word means appointed. It's a group of individuals appointed to oversee an organization. And also, they have the power to appoint or dismiss people, okay? So it's an appointed group of individuals that oversee an organization. And this group also has the power to appoint others as well as dismiss others, okay? That is what the board of trustees does, okay? And the word "appointed" means pre-arranged, decided upon, preordained, authorized, set, designated, okay? Preordained, pre-arranged, okay? And this word is not just for me. God is saying, "A lot of you guys are on his board of trustees. He's chosen you as that group of individuals to oversee other people. He's appointed you as his board of trustees to oversee other people, to appoint other people as well as dismiss other people, okay? But the only way for you to be a righteous judge and judge righteously like the Lord is saying in this word is if you lean on him. Because if you allow yourself to judge the situation, you're not going to judge it righteously. And I know this is for so many of you right now that you know how to judge righteously. And God is calling you up to the plate. But this is also for you guys that you still have a lot of learning to do in this hour. And it's for you to lean in on him. Again, I see the comments, you guys saying, "Why would God have you stand for this person? Why would God..." Because he's God and this is about saving souls? And he had to take a stand for you, for your little dirty self, for my little dirty self? Why you think he won't make you stand for somebody else's little dirty self, okay? These people are human. It's about saving souls, guys, point blank, period. But again, some of you have learning to do and you'll come to the realization of this as God keeps teaching you, okay? Some of you, you're there. God is just saying, "Step up to the plate." Because when you step up to the plate and you judge righteously, someone else is going to be able to step up to the plate that he's setting before them, okay? When Ananias was sent to anoint Paul and to restore his vision, Paul then walked into purpose. He became Apostle Paul. He loved the Lord. Paul didn't care if he was arrested, under chains, whatever. He was there to work for the Lord, the same man who was killing the Lord's people previously, okay? But when Ananias was sent to go anoint him and to restore his vision, he was pushed into purpose. And that is why God is using you guys to judge righteously. I don't know what's wrong with my shirt right here, sorry, guys. But that is why he's appointing you guys to be the judge for others and to judge righteously. Not just based on what you think is right, but to judge accurately, his way, okay? So I just wanted to give you guys that little background. So 24 hours after Sister Leslie gave me her vision and all of that good stuff in the board of trustees word, the Lord gave me a dream. In the dream, my sister in Christ, Angie, was trying to get a job, but she had left her ID, her license, her ID in Florida, right? So she wasn't able to get the job. So I had to use my ID with my picture on it, right? And I remember being at this doctor's office and I gave my ID to the doctor. And I ended up leaving the doctor's office and forgetting my ID. So I went back to get my ID, right? And when I went back to get my ID, this lady was at the front desk. And I'm like, "Yeah, I left my ID by accident. Can I get my ID back?" And she goes, "I know that wasn't your true ID." She's like, "Because it had your picture, but it didn't have your name." She's like, "The name on your ID says Deborah on it, right?" And she goes, "I've seen quite a few people use her name on their ID. So she must be a pretty fantastic person." This is what the doctor tells me at the doctor's office. So I respond, "Well, she was the judge in the Bible. So yeah, I'd say she's pretty awesome." And we laughed about it. That was the end of the dream, okay? When I woke up, I saw the number two in a vision and I knew the Lord was telling me to read Judges, chapter two. And we're gonna cover the verses that he gave me in Judges, chapter two. And that's when I also heard him say, "Help others get the job done by judging righteously," okay? And we already explained to you guys what that means. But let's break down the dream. Angie, who's my sister in Christ in real life, okay? She was trying to get a job. She left her identification in Florida, okay? Florida, the motto for Florida is "In God We Trust," okay? It's "In God We Trust." In real life, Angie's never been to Florida, okay? She's from Texas, lives in California. In this dream, she left her ID in Florida. That was just the Lord's way of saying, "Angie is trusting in me to get to the place that I've called her to," okay? She's trusting in me. Again, she left her ID, her identity, in Florida. So she left it in God, in trusting God to get her to where he told her he was gonna take her, okay? Follow me, guys. Her identity, who she is, her purpose, who he's called her to be. She's trusting in God to get her to that place, okay? So when I discovered she had left her ID in Florida, I stepped up to the plate and gave this doctor my ID to use in place for Angie to be able to get this job, okay? Keep in mind, it was my ID, my face, my picture on the ID, but the name was Deborah, okay? Deborah, the name Deborah means honeybee, okay? Honeybee, but she's also the judge in the Bible, okay? Deborah in scripture sits under a palm tree. She's a mother, she's a wife, she's a prophetess, she's a judge, okay? She's in the book of Judges. She sits under her palm tree. The children come to her and she judges righteously. She gives them sound advice, wise counsel, and God speaks to her. When he speaks to her and tell her to send out orders, she sends out the orders to people, okay? She judges righteously based on God, okay? And most people look at her tree, "Oh, she has her own tree." Because it's her palm tree in the Bible. But guys, a palm tree symbolizes a leader. And a lot of the times prophetically, a palm tree symbolizes the Lord Jesus Christ. If you guys remember, as the Lord Jesus was entering Jerusalem, the people lined the streets with palm trees, okay? So technically, look at this spiritually. She sits under the palm tree of Deborah, but technically, she's sitting underneath the Lord, okay? So that she can hear what he's saying and what orders he's telling her to send out to his people, okay? And in the book of Judges, she gets a message for Barak to go fight against Sisera, okay? Deborah gets a message from the Lord for Barak to go fight against Sisera to take him out, right? So she gives the orders to Sisera. I'm sorry, she gives the orders to Barak. And Barak tells Deborah in the Bible, he's like, "I'm not gonna go fight Sisera unless you come with me." So she ends up going with Barak to handle his business, even though she tells him, "I'm gonna go with you." But Sisera is going to be taken out by a woman. But I'm still gonna go with you to fight because there was something God had called Barak to do. So she went with him because that was the only way that Barak was going to go and handle his business and handle his orders that the Lord had given him, okay? Follow me. So I give my ID at the doctor's office for Angie to be able to get this job. Deborah, the judge, okay? I stepped up for Angie to be able to step into purpose, okay? And that's what God is calling many of you guys to do for other people, to stand in the gap so that you can push that person into purpose, okay? The same thing he had Ananias do for Saul. He's calling you and me to do that, okay? To judge righteously. So I give the ID to the doctor. I leave so that Angie could get the job. I gave her the ID. I left and when I left, I forgot to get my ID back. So when I went back, the doctor's like, "This is your picture, but it has Deborah on it." She's like, "So I know, like, this isn't really like you." She's like, "I know this isn't your name." And she goes, "I've seen quite a few people use her name on their ID. So she must be a pretty fantastic person." I respond, "Well, she was a judge in the Bible. So yes, I'd say she's pretty awesome." We laughed about it, end of dream, okay? That was basically the Lord letting me know who he's calling me to be, okay? The great physician, the doctor, is him, okay? And she said, "I've seen many people use her name." As in, God is saying, "I'm not the only judge that he's calling to the forefront. Many of you, he's appointing as a judge to help other people, to lead his people, okay? To lead his people." He's calling many of you guys to accept your identity, accept your identification, the name that he's giving you as the Deborah, the honeybee, the judge, the prophetess, the wife, the mother, okay? The judge, to lead his people to where they need to be, okay? Because they're trusting in God. And God works through people, okay? Two by two, or he sends them out in singles, but he works through people. And he's calling many of us to judge righteously, guys. He's sending many of us to judge righteously. And the doctor's office just represented a place of restoration, a place of healing, a place of curing, a place where you go to get checked in and get a checkup, okay? That's the Lord's house. He's the great physician, but we are his physicians that he sends out to bring healing to other people, to bring restoration to other people. I don't know what's going on with my shirt. To bring restoration to other people. He's the great physician, but we are his physicians, okay? And he's saying he's calling you guys to the forefront. Accept your identity. Deborah in the Bible could have been like, "Barak, I'm not going with you. You're a man. Be a leader and take responsibility for what God is telling you to do." She didn't. She agreed to go with him, okay? Agreed to go with these people as God leads you. Don't try to judge according to how other people would think the situation should play out. Judge it righteously, how God is telling you to judge, how he's telling you to handle the situation, guys. Angie couldn't get the job. She had left her ID, okay? "In God We Trust." She put her trust in God. And when they put their trust in God, God sends one of his disciples, just like he sent Ananias, one of his followers, to go lay hands, to go heal Saul, so that he can finish on and walk into purpose, okay? The Lord took Saul's sight, but in him losing his sight, he found his vision. Y'all better catch that spiritually. And God is calling you to be the Ananiases and the Debras, the Debras, to judge righteously, okay? And again, when I woke up... Did I pause this? No, I didn't pause it. I thought I paused, you guys. When I woke up, I saw the number two in a vision and I knew the Lord was telling me Judges, chapter two, okay? And I'm gonna read Judges, chapter two, verses 16 through 18. It says, "Nevertheless, the Lord raised up judges who delivered them out of the hands of those who plundered them. Yet they would not listen to their judges, but they played the harlot with other gods and bowed down to them. They turned quickly from the way in which their fathers walked in obeying the commandments of the Lord. They did not do so. And when the Lord raised up judges for them, the Lord was with the judge and delivered them out of the hands of their enemies all the days of the judge. For the Lord was moved to pity by their groaning because of those who oppressed them and harassed them." I'm gonna read this one more time. "Nevertheless, the Lord raised up judges who delivered them out of the hands of those who plundered them." To plunder, guys, means to steal, to rob, to devastate, to strip of everything, okay? "Yet they would not listen to their judges, but they played the harlot, as in the whore, the prostitute, with other gods and bowed down to them. They turned quickly away from the way in which their fathers walked in obeying commandments of the Lord. They did not do so. And when the Lord raised up judges for them, the Lord was with the judge. The Lord was with the judge and delivered them out of the hands of their enemies all the days of the judge. For the Lord was moved to pity by their groaning because of those who oppressed them and harassed them." Okay? What the Lord is speaking in these set of scriptures for this dream that I gave you guys is that those of you that he's raising up as a judge for other people, he is with you. Again, he heals people, he restores them, he leads them into purpose through people, through you, through me. And he's with you, okay? Everybody he sends you to judge righteously for, not everybody's gonna listen to you and that's okay. But those that do listen to you, you're going to be able to relieve those people from their sickness, from their enemy. They're going to get healed, restored, be pushed into purpose because you are stepping up to the plate as the judge that God has called you to be, as the Deborah. They're able to get the job, to step into purpose, to walk into their calling because you judge righteously according to how God has led you. You are the judge. You are the little physician. God is the great physician. He's the captain of the ship, but we are physicians too. We're made in God's image. So we're meant to heal, to restore, to push people into calling just as the Lord did for us. He works through people, okay? He works through you and me. And he's saying, "Take your ID." The lady said, "Several people have used this name." So she must be, what was her word? So she must be a pretty fantastic person. I said, "Yeah, she was the judge in the Bible. So I'd say she's pretty awesome." That lady, the doctor said, "Many people have used Deborah's name." God is calling many judges in this hour. My face is itching so bad. He's calling many of you into position. He's put many of you guys on the board of trustees. He's appointed and anointed you, okay? He's appointed and anointed you to... Let me get my words right because I don't wanna make up words. He's appointed and anointed you to oversee other people, to oversee other organizations. And he's giving you the power to appoint and dismiss people, okay? To appoint and dismiss. He wants you to judge righteously, guys. This is a domino effect. So as I hit somebody, they hit the next person. The other person hits the next person until we're all like dominos, just laid down and humbled at God's feet. That is the goal. It's about saving souls. Some of you are already there and you understand the assignment. You just haven't stepped up to claim your ID, Deborah. And this is for a man or a woman, whoever this is for. This is gonna convict your heart. It's gonna pull on those strings, so y'all know. But the other half of you guys, you're still so stuck on judging and how God wouldn't have you stand for narcissists and how he wouldn't have you stand in the gap for this person. And this person has tattoos. So you know he wouldn't have you do this? Like you guys are judging wrong. He's saying, "Judge righteously," as in, "Let him lead you." Stop stamping who he wouldn't send in your life, who he wouldn't have you stand in the gap for when he stood in the gap for your little dirty self and my little dirty self too. So who made you head honcho to try to call out another person just because you are now walking righteously? Guess what? Even though you're walking righteously and you're connected to God, you are still a sinner. I am still a sinner. We're only made righteous and pure through God. But until the day we leave this earth and go be with our Father, we are still sinners. And we still have to repent daily for sins knowingly and unknowingly. So just because you chose to get it right does not give you the right to judge somebody else for still being stuck. Yeah, they could decline your help as judge. We just read it. The Lord says, "Yeah, I sent judges for you guys." And some of them declined it. They didn't wanna judge. They didn't want help. And that's okay. Dust your feet when you reject it and keep on moving. But as long as God is telling you to stand in the gap for that person and to help a person and to push them into purpose and to do this and to do that, your orders are gonna come directly from God. You can't argue with him about that. You can, but you won't win that argument. God is your boss. He pays you. He cuts the checks. You are breathing because he gave you breath. Judge righteously is what he's saying, guys. I'm also going to read Jeremiah eight, verse 22. And this is when Jeremiah is just like weeping and mourning for the people because they are just living an idolatrous lifestyle, like they are doing the most. And Jeremiah, also known as, his name means the one who got appointed, okay? But he was also known as the weeping prophet. Excuse me. So yeah, in this verse, he's just, he's so over the people and he's just hurt for them because they know the word of God. They know the word of God. They know his healing power. They know who he is. And yet, they still decide to live in sin, okay? It says, "Is there no balm in Gilead?" Balm, B-A-L-M, guys, not bomb, but balm, like ointment, okay? "Is there no balm in Gilead?" Or Gilead, some people say Gilead. "Is there no physician there? Why then has not the health of the daughter of my people been restored?" Okay, I'm gonna read that one more time. Jeremiah eight, verse 22. "Is there no balm, B-A-L-M, as in ointment, medicine, in Gilead? Is there no physician there? Why then has not the health of the daughter of my people been restored?" So Jeremiah is like, "Is there no ointment? Like, no healing, no medication? Is there no physician, no healer in that land? Then why are you guys not restored? Why are you falling apart, living in sin, dirty, defiled, okay? You are the physician that God is assigning. I am the physician that God is assigning, guys." And back in these days, balm, B-A-L-M, was really an ointment used back in the day that was super expensive, that was used for medicinal purposes in order to heal wounds, okay? It was very expensive back in biblical days, okay? So Jeremiah has every right to be like, "Is there no balm over here? Like, I know y'all got the ointment, the medicine. I know there's a physician here. Why has my daughter not been restored? Why has the health of my daughter not been restored?" Like, that's his way of saying, "Let's translate." You know the Lord, you know his word. You know who brings healing to you. Why are you so sick, okay? You know the great physician. Why are you sick? Why are you not restored? Again, I was in a doctor's office. I had to present my ID in the doctor's office to the doctor in order for Angie, God's daughter, to get restored in order for her to get the job, in order for her to be pushed into purpose, okay? I had to step up to the plate and show my ID. It had my picture on it, but the name on it was Deborah. I had to step up and judge righteously so that she can get her job done. Because she had left her ID in Florida, meaning she had put her trust in God. Again, Florida's motto, I'm from Florida, is "In God We Trust." She put her trust in God. And in her putting her trust in God, God has put me in her life to assist her in certain areas. And I've done just that for my sister in Christ thus far. She told me the other day, she's like, "I'm so thankful for you because had you not came into my life, I don't know where I would be." She's like, "Probably dead or doing something crazy." She's like, "I'm thankful for you." I stepped up to the plate. I didn't know Angie from a can of paint, okay? I just knew what God had told me. I just knew what God had told me. He said, meet her um, for lunch and bring her this, these clothes and bring her this purse. And I just packed up this purse. Um, I had this big, huge purse of mine, um, I, I think it was like a Dunian Burke. This was like a, a two thousand dollar purse that my sister-in-law, that I don't talk to anymore, had given me. Just she, she's a person who um, she's big into spending and just high-rolling. So she gave me like this big Dunian Burke purse, guys. This was like a two thousand dollar bag, huge. God told me, get that purse out of your closet, pack the clothes um, that you don't wear in that purse, invite Angie to lunch and give her these things. I didn't know Angie. I only knew her because she joined my Zoom um, Ladies Night Inn earlier this year. But I was obedient. I was obedient to God's leading. And at uh, lunch, when I gave Angie this purse and these clothes, she had told me, she's like, oh my God, like teary-eyed almost. She was like, I just asked God to send me new clothes. I was just telling him I needed new clothes, I needed new dresses. God heard her. I didn't know what she was talking to him about. And we've been friends since then. That is my sister in Christ. I didn't know her. I just know that I heard God tell me, do this. Give her this, give her that, take these clothes down. And I was, as I was taking the clothes down in my closet, this was earlier this year, I was like, Lord, how you know she could fit this? He was like, just take it out of your closet. So I'm just being obedient. I didn't know that later down the line, me being friends with her would help push her into purpose. Angie quit her job here. She moved from Texas to California with no job, with nothing, and now God has opened doors for her. And God is asking you to do the same thing for somebody else, for whoever this word is for. He's calling you to the forefront. Again, I was in a doctor's office, a place of restoration, a place of curing. People go to the doctor's office to get a checkup, okay? From the neck up. When something ain't right, you go to your doctor, the great physician. He sends people to heal, to restore, to push, just like he sent Ananias. And Ananias didn't understand it either. He's like, you want me to do what, Lord? And I'm paraphrasing. He's like, you want me to do what for Saul? The person who was murdering people? You want me to lay hands on him so he can get his, his vision? Why? The Lord was like, that's the one who I've chosen. That's the one whom I've chosen. That was his way of saying, translation, Ananias, this ain't about how you feel. This is me, the Lord, judging righteously. Go do what I say. And Ananias took his little happy self over there and anointed Paul and uh, Saul at the time. And he got his vision back and then he was thrust into purpose, Apostle Paul. And God is calling you to do that for somebody else. Whew, okay. Um, and yeah, guys, Jeremiah eight, twenty-two. And again, balm back then was really expensive. If you guys um, read back in Jeremiah, not Jeremiah, Genesis thirty-seven, verse twenty-five, it says, as they sat down to eat their meal, they looked up and saw a caravan of Ishmaelites coming from Gilead. The camels were loaded with spices, balm, B-A-L-M, and myrrh, and they were on their way to take them down to Egypt. Again, guys, back then, balm was um, used for medicinal purposes. It was used to treat and heal womb, wounds. So this is why in Jeremiah eight, twenty-two, Jeremiah is like, is there no balm in Gilead? Is there no physician there? Why then has not the health of my daughter, of the daughter of my people been restored? Y'all know God. You got the balm, you got the physician, okay? Why y'all sinning and sick? AKA, translation, why are y'all spiritually dead? If y'all know the physician, you know his word, you got the healing ointment, you got the healer right in the palm of your hands, but you're, you're spiritually dead. He's like, why then has not the health of the daughter of my people been restored? Again, in this dream, I was helping God's daughter, Angie, get the job done. Here's my ID. I had to give it to the doctor. Here's my ID. God is saying judge righteously, guys. Judge righteously. Um, and I'm just gonna read from Acts, chapter nine. I'm gonna read from verses eleven through um, seventeen. And this is when Ananias goes to heal Saul and restore his vision like the Lord told him to do. So the Lord said to him, arise and go to the street called Straight and inquire at the house of Judas for one called Saul of Tarsus. For behold, he is praying. And in a vision, he has seen a man named Ananias coming in and putting his hand, putting his hand on him so that he might receive his sight. Then Ananias answered, Lord, I have heard from many about this man, how much harm he has done to your saints in Jerusalem. And here he has the authority from the chief priests to bind all who call on your name? But the Lord said to him, go, for he is a chosen vessel of mine to bear my name before the Gentiles, the unbelievers, kings and the children of Israel, for I will show him how many things he must suffer for my name's sake. And Ananias went his way and entered the house and laying hands on him, he said, brother Saul, the Lord Jesus who appeared to you on the road as you came has sent me that you may receive your sight and be filled with the Holy Spirit. Immediately there fell from his eyes something like scales and he received his sight at once and he arose and was baptized. Guys, again, the Lord Jesus could have restored Saul's sight himself, okay? After all, he the one that blinded the man. Ananias ain't blind him, the Lord did. But the Lord, he sent Ananias to restore his sight. God works through people. And Ananias listened. He judged righteously. After he judged the wrong way in the beginning. He was like, I heard what, what he's done to these people, like I've heard about him. And the Lord was like, uh, translation, so what? He's my chosen vessel. Go do what I told you to do. Again, Ananias wasn't wrong, okay? What he said was right. Saul had killed the Lord's people. He had gotten orders from the chief to go take the Lord's people out, anybody who called on the Lord. Ananias was right in what he said, but he wasn't accurate. Cuz the accurate way was God's way, okay? It, it, there, there's a right way and an accurate way. And I'm telling you guys, I'm gonna say this as much as God calls me to say it. The Lord told me, daughter, teach people how to do it the accurate way, not just the right way. Guys, again, Ananias was not wrong in what he said. He was right, but how he was going about it was not accurate because it wasn't the way that God wanted it to be done. If it was up to Ananias, he wouldn't have went to uh, lay hands on Saul and restore his sight. But Ananias knew who his boss was. So know who your boss is, because what may seem right to you is not the accurate way, is not the way that the Lord Jesus would want you to do it. So those of you that he's calling to step up, step up, guys. He's calling his Debras to the forefront and this could be for a man um, or a woman. He's calling his Board of Trustees in place, his judges that are going to judge righteously.
That's it, guys, for this word. Um, I didn't expect it to be that long. I need to stop telling y'all this gonna be a quick word, but oh well, uh, that's it for this word. Um, I hope this blesses somebody. I hope y'all are having a good day. Um, yeah, that's it, y'all. I love y'all. Um, thank you for those that have sowed seeds into me, um, that have sown seeds into me. I cannot talk today like every other day. Um, but thank you, guys, um, for the seeds. Thank you for the prayers. Thank you for the love. I appreciate each and every one of you guys. I pray over your seeds. I pray for you guys. Keep praying for me. Um, there's so much happening in this hour, guys. I woke up this morning um, after having a dream and I, I walked in the living room and I just caught three sixteen on the clock as I'm speaking this word. But I walked into the living room and there was three thirty-three on the stove early this morning, uh, three thirty-three. And I was like, okay, Lord. And then when I woke up two hours later, a sister in Christ had sowed three thirty-three into me. Um, so I knew the Lord was speaking, guys. Um, I knew the Lord was speaking. And he was speaking um, Jeremiah thirty-three-three, I believe. And it says, call to me and I will teach you um, secret things that you do not know, okay? And let me check and make sure that's Jeremiah thirty-three-three. Hold on, guys. Yep, Jeremiah thirty-three-three. Call to me and I will answer you and tell you great and unsearchable things you do not know. Um, and I knew the Lord was speaking, so I called on him. Um, and I'm just letting him download. And you guys, whoever this is for, call on him. And he's gonna teach you great and unsearchable things, secret things that you do not know, okay? That's all for this word. I love y'all. Have a blessed day.